Let's just hope the power don't go out. Hey Patty.
Hey.
Good.
First I can't. I had to tell the turn.
Did you get it everywhere?
Yeah. Yeah. It's something.
What?
Everybody at church thinks I own the clock. And they keep coming up to me, students, and saying, you gotta fix your clock.
Why? It's right somewhere.
I know, I told them.
It's right.
But they didn't buy that.
Which, not that.
Who's is it?
I said only the very. It's okay, I just.
They got the rock already, we glue them together. She's not here. She's at a ball game where I should be.
Well, no, she's, is she at the ballroom now?
Huh? No, she's at a ball game. Both my twins are playing at two different places. Yeah, and I'm not, I had, I had come to meet. Like something.
Y'all ready gentlemen?
If you are.
All right. Good evening folks. All right. Good evening. Today's Thursday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-four. It is seven P M. This is the regularly scheduled town council meeting. Stokesdale, if you could, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
All right. Mr. Jones, would you lead us in prayer, please, sir?
Yes, sir. If you would bow your heads, please. Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you. Ultimately, everything belongs to you and you rule in all matters. We ask that you lead and guide and direct this council, give us the wisdom that we need to utilize to make decisions on behalf of the town of Stokesdale. We ask that you lead, guide, and direct each one of our citizens in whatever needs they may have. In Jesus's name, amen.
All right. First item of business is to review and adopt the agenda. Gentlemen, any changes to the agenda? Additions?
Mr. Foy, I need to add a couple of things.
Okay.
It doesn't matter to me where we put these. I would like for council to discuss an inventory of our closed session minutes.
Okay. Let's throw that right there, thirteen point five. Or thirteen A.
Okay, and the other item is a discussion of an item presented by our Guilford County School Board representative that is titled Transportation Window Open for Two Thousand Twenty-Four, Two Thousand Twenty-Five School Year.
Okay. Transportation window open.
Where you put?
Twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Saw something about that on Facebook.
You're putting it thirteen C.
Yeah, we'll do thirteen.
Suits me.
Thirteen C, that's fine. Also, for item number. Let's see. Robbie, help me out. We had one we needed to continue. Actually, we need to continue item thirteen. To next month. Waiting for what that is, is basically for the town to be able to advertise on Guilford County's website for rezonings. And we.
Do, do we need to discuss this and vote to have council, I mean, excuse me, council staff and the town attorney pursue, spend the energies to pursue this?
We've already directed, during the budget workshop, we directed them to reach out and obtain the resolution.
So you think we're good?
Okay. We just, they haven't got the feedback they needed, so I think we can just roll it to May ninth.
All right.
We're gonna cancel these closed sessions.
No. No. Anything else, gentlemen? All right, with that, I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda with these two changes, three changes. All right, Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I'm also aye. Item number three, review and adopt the following minutes, November second, twenty twenty-three. Gentlemen, did y'all have a chance to review those?
Hold on a second if I'm getting on the right page. November second, two thousand twenty-three.
Yes, sir.
November second, yeah, sorry.
Yeah. There, there's one change that I think we could make if we get the town clerk to promise to do so. I would like on page two, for second paragraph where it identifies Brian Ketner as a consultant and former N C D O T project engineer. I would like the company he's working for identified in these minutes. I think it's important.
Okay. I'm, I'll move to approve the minutes from November second, twenty twenty-three with a one change to include the occupation of Mr. Ketner, or the company he works for at the time.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion to second, Jimmy? Tim?
Aye.
I'm also aye. Next up is public safety reports. Mr. Galton. Chief Galton.
That's okay. Good evening, everyone. Thanks everybody out on what looks like is gonna turn out to be a messy evening for a while anyway. So our March report for our activities at the fire department, we run a total of ninety calls. Fifty-five of those were medical, ten were fire-related, and twenty-five of the other variety. I, I didn't have any clue that the weather was gonna be moving in and be what it is tonight. So for my message, I had actually, because we're coming into the time of the year where we get a lot of storms and stuff, just a reminder to everybody that take heed to these severe weather warnings. You know, we're, we're in a place where we have had tornadoes, we have had straight-line winds. And it looks like this evening between about six and ten was the last message I got from emergency management before I left the office. We, we're in the window of opportunity there again. So having said that, I would just urge everyone, if you don't have a weather radio, please get one. We all carry a device now that we can put an app on for the weather alerts. If you don't have anything else on there, please do. For whatever reason, it seems like a lot of these storms and things happen at night when everybody's asleep. That's when the most injuries and deaths occur, unfortunately. But I don't know of a phone that you can't get it on, and not very many people do not have a phone that they don't carry or have beside their bed or something like that. So we really used to push the weather alert radios and all, but it's kind of ready-made for us now. So we just urge everybody to have that and, and have a plan because you never know when. Outside of that, all we got.
Todd, if I may, a couple of questions. I don't want to get us bogged down here.
Sure.
Most of your medical calls, do they, do they split up in any particular category? Like, are eighty percent for wrecks and ten percent are elderly calls? Industrial accidents? Just curious.
You know, we, we can go back and break them down. We don't, we just count them as, as medical because we have such a, now, we, we break them down at the end of the year. We pull vehicle accidents and things like that out at the end of the year when we do our yearly report. We could do that, it's just so time-consuming to go back and, and run those type reports that.
Well, if there were a particular category that you were seeing over and over again, like lawnmower accidents, I presume, that y'all would say, hey, guys, you know, the lawnmowers, you're gonna kill yourself, you need to watch out for this, watch out for that.
If I was gonna say, the biggest increase we've had and the most common since COVID is falls. We see in, just an enormous amount of falls. Not, I'm not saying that it's COVID-related, but for whatever reason, there's just been a, an extremely high uptick in the amount of fall calls that we get. And, you know, they're, they're for various reasons. You know, some of them are, are accidental, some of them are because of illness. Some of them may just be somebody that's elderly that slid out of the bed, slid out of a chair or something like that. But I would say the biggest uptick in calls that we've seen medical-related is falls. Our vehicle accidents, believe it or not, we've, we've always run a high volume of vehicle accidents, whether it's with injury or without. And they're staying, you know, one year we may be up, the next year we're back to average, the next year we're up. So it, it just depends.
The other one is, it's on my mind, because I made a call to nine-one-one this week. There was a, a truck accident, and it was only one vehicle involved, but the back end's sticking out in the road a little bit. And I called nine-one-one, and they asked, well, is anybody hurt? I says, well, the driver says he's fine, that's all I know.
Right.
So the driver, I mean, the nine-one-one folks connected me with the highway patrol.
Sure.
But there's been a couple of, couple of three times when I've witnessed accidents and I've called nine-one-one. I remember one in particular at sixty-five and one fifty-eight with about five cars under that intersection in the dark with flashers on, just stopped, people talking on their cellphone, and I'm saying, oh my God, these people are gonna get run over. And so the nine-one-one dispatcher is, is apparently very reluctant to send y'all for traffic control. Is, is there some, am I missing something here?
No, basically, what they, they base on who they dispatch. They have cards and they have a certain set of questions that they ask when you call in and tell them what it is. And then those sub-determinants help them make the decision if they're gonna send fire, if they're only gonna send police, if they're only gonna send EMS. I'll give you a prime example of that. A lot of times at a doctor's office, they don't send us, there's a doctor there. You know, now, there, there could be an instance where we go like that. The same thing on wrecks. If three people call in and they say, oh, there's nobody injured, everybody's okay, all we need is the highway patrol, then, then they won't send us.
I'm just saying, I as the caller, I'm, I'm saying, I, I think somebody's gonna get hurt here.
Right.
There's no blue lights, there's no red lights, I think you need to send somebody.
Right. And believe it or not, a lot of times, we'll get a call directly into the station, which y'all know every year I talk about. Please don't do that, dial nine-one-one because of the tiered system and how we respond. But we will occasionally get people that call in, and sometimes they'll even stop by the station. I think the call you were talking about the other morning may have been involved in a tractor-trailer. Yeah, we, we were outside and the guy come in the front of the station blowing the horn and everything, and I thought, uh-oh, this is not gonna be good. And, and he was actually letting us know about that, so, so we went down there. But if it's something like that, that we can get to and help avoid another accident or something, we, we will go till law enforcement gets there and.
I'm, I'm just, it just seemed really odd, I'm talking to the nine-one-one dispatcher, telling them what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
And in this particular instance, they were, can you get closer, can you talk to him? I said, ma'am, I think they're in a hazardous spot, I'm not going up there.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll talk later.
Yeah, like I say, so a lot, a lot of it goes with what information you get and, and they put in that determines who goes and how much goes and, and all of that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, no problem. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Todd. All right, next up, Robbie, do we have a, a report from the Guilford County Sheriff's Office?
It's brief, but we do.
Thank you, sir.
Let's see. So this is from Sergeant Seals of District One and Guilford County Sheriff's Office. He said that we took a total of nineteen case reports in the town limits for March. He's unable to give me a total number of calls due to the software issues, but they had no major issues or trends to report for the month. Most, most of the reports involve domestic-related incidents.
All right, thank you, Robbie.
That's good.
Moving right along, administrative reports. Mr. Wagner.
Yeah. So I've included in your packet, so I won't go over everything. If there's anything you have questions about, let me know. But basically, the water report from Mrs. Hunsucker is that we had six water meters installed, forty-five water meters in stock, nine applications for transfer of water service and water meters in, twenty-three water meters slash applications on hold for builders, fourteen work orders, sixty-two eight-one-ones, eight hundred and three water bills mailed out, and there was one water account in the sixty-day period, and that was, service was disconnected to that provider or that customer on four nine twenty-four. And for the two water line extension projects that we've got going on, not much of an update on the Coldwater Road project, more or less the same information that we had last month. And they're still expecting that the, the phase for the preliminary design will be completed by the end of this month. And for the water line extension on Ellisboro Road, again, we've received the bid documents from Kinnearly and town staff's working with our town attorney, Mr. Winfrey, to make sure those documents are satisfactory and compliant with all the federal and state funding prereqs.
Good. And hopefully, we can have an answer to that what's still out there hanging, so we can go ahead and start soliciting bids for that.
Correct.
Within the next couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Would be reasonable.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. And, you know, like I said, is there any, I've, I've got one more thing that wasn't in the admin report. It kind of came up after this packet was sent out, and so I'll touch on that. But is there any questions about the admin report? Good. All right. So with that, we did, so there's an update, and I won't go too much in depth because I think we've got a, a public comment about it. But there was some correspondence back and forth between the town and N C D O T's Division Seven Office and the fire department regarding the closure of one fifty-eight for Spring Festival. And there's been some updates on that as of today, and I prepared a memo right towards the end of the day and placed it at everybody's chair and emailed it out, so feel free to, to look over that. But I won't touch on it too much because we'll, we'll have someone.
Good.
We'll let the update come from the, the main source.
All right.
And that's it for the admin report.
The concerns were ironed out.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
All righty. Let's see. Any questions for Robbie, gentlemen?
Nope, nope, thank you, Robbie.
Yeah, thank you. Do note, I, I believe this is the, eight hundred and three water bills mailed out, I think.
That's the most.
Yeah, that's.
We broke eight hundred.
Yeah. We're at five hundred and thirty.
When you started.
Years ago, when I started. So that's a lot of water bills. Priscilla's doing a wonderful job with that. Robbie, how about planning board? We gonna have a meeting?
Nope, no planning board meeting for the month of April, so it's been canceled. It was scheduled for April the twenty-fifth, and it's been canceled because there was nothing, no applications filed with the Guilford County Department of Planning before the cutoff date. Mason will prepare and advertise a notice of cancellation soon. And one thing to note is, per council's request, oh, maybe back in February, I believe, Mr. Snyder has prepared a PowerPoint presentation, and he's intending, he's, he's been kind of putting off the presentation of that because he wanted to do it before the next planning board meeting. Well, we haven't had one since January, so he's just gonna go ahead and move forward with it. So he's working with Mason to get in touch with all the planning board members and let him know that he's gonna do it over Zoom on April the twenty-fifth. And I don't know the exact time, Justin hasn't said, but at seven o'clock, okay. It'll be at, at the time of what the meeting would normally be. So.
I sure wish we could do that in person.
Well, I mean, we can reach out to him and see. I guess the only reason that he, he would have done it in person had we had a meeting. So.
Right.
He can put it off until the next planning board meeting, if we have one this year.
I believe our planning board would get more out of an in-person training.
Okay, well, we can certainly tell them to hold off.
That's just my opinion, but.
Would you rather him hold off and wait until we have a planning board meeting and come and present it before that meeting, or?
Yeah, I thought that's what we initially discussed, and I do like that idea.
That's fine, then we can, we can wait.
Gentlemen, what do y'all think?
I mean, that's fine, I mean, he could do it, he could do it this time if, you know, we don't have to have a meeting to do it because you're gonna need to get a lot of people in that's not actually, you wanna be sitting on a planning board, you're gonna bring your alternates in, and a lot of times the alternates don't come to the meeting, so.
Correct.
I mean, the only people you're gonna be pulling in is the regular planning board.
Yeah.
And they would be, anyway, it would be a shorter meeting. I mean, if you, you have a planning board meeting, then you do a train, it's gonna make it longer, which, I mean, it's, it's up to those guys. What they'd rather do.
My discussion with Justin, he basically said he would do it over Zoom unless he was coming here for a meeting. If he wasn't coming here for a, a advertised planning board meeting, then he would rather do it over Zoom. So just wait until we have a meeting.
Just make sure that everybody's contacted.
Oh, yeah.
Every single, you know, everybody.
Yeah, that's fine.
So they could, you know, make, because a lot of them want to come, didn't they?
Understood.
Mr. Foy, I have no love for computers, they're useful tools, but sometimes they seem to take over the world. I, I would prefer this be done in person.
Okay.
If I had my druthers about it.
All right, well, there it is.
More of an opportunity for the, the planning board members to interact and ask a question if they have one, in my opinion.
Good. All right, Robbie, thank you for that. Next up, we have Town Park Improvement Committee, Mr. T.
Evening, T. Good evening, good evening. Thanks to everyone for coming out on this dreary night. I hope everybody gets here and home safely and that we're spared from any of the turbulent weather that we're anticipating. A quick update on the nature trail. As you know, last month's meeting, it was approved to move forward with allowing the, the Boy Scout troop for a special Eagle Scout project to help with that nature trail. I would like to advise that Andrew Neesele with Scout Troop One Thirty-nine has gone out and raised the funds that were required to purchase the tools that would be needed to clear that path. They have been ordered, they anticipate them receiving those tools at the end of this month, and then the work will be scheduled following that. He put together a little fund me, GoFundMe page on Facebook and had quite a good deal of success with that. Please announce that the signs for posting rules and regulations for the basketball and pickleball courts have been received and are posted on the basketball and pickleball courts. We are continuing to refine some of the details for the preparation of the R F P for the lighting project for the soccer fields. Still getting some details in and putting those finishing touches on, and I think Robbie and, and Mr. Wagner are gonna be, Mr. Wagner and Mr. Winfrey will be working on that, Mr. Winfrey won.
Understood.
We'll be putting the details on that, and we'll get that out as soon as possible.
Right.
Again, based on the approval by town council at the last month's meeting, the accessories for the park have been ordered. We anticipate those to be received probably in the next four to six weeks and be installed. They'll be letting us know when they are in stock and then scheduling the time to come out and install those. These are mats for the swings and, and some of the new equipment that we purchased, as well as some additional benches and trash cans to facilitate the use of those facilities. We do have two new, as we reported last month, we have two new security lights that have been installed by Duke Energy. They are operational now, we actually noticed that they were working, so the, that area is lit. An additional security measure, Mr. Wagner did have a meeting with a representative from Century Watch earlier today, and they are going to be preparing some options for us for installation of additional cameras. I believe we can get two more cameras under our current plan without going to a next tier of number of cameras allowed under the program. So they'll be looking at placing and how to be placed. I don't believe we can put them on the poles that are there for the Duke Energy lighting because Duke will want to charge us rent for the use of those poles. So we'll look at some other, other options for that, but they'll be working on that in the next few days. Other than that, the next meeting will be next Thursday at five fifteen in this room of the Park Improvement Committee, and it is open to the public, and all are welcome to attend and participate. Any questions?
Gentlemen?
Just a reminder, you know, remind the Boy Scouts that we do have poison oak back in the bushes, just as a precaution. I know they're young and bulletproof, but just, just saying.
Absolutely.
Some of them may not have experienced a good case yet.
Hidden briars and other various things. Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Any further questions for T? Thank you, Mr. T.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mr. T.
All right, next up, we have Kim. Kim, we, we're glad that we gave you an excuse to get away from the office. Four days left.
Yes, yes. I will be heading back there after I finish with the financials.
Yep, we appreciate all you do and.
And I appreciate you guys as well.
What you got?
We will, if I can speak. We will start with the general fund tonight, as usual. In our ARPA account, we have three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars. Our Bank of Oak Ridge money market account, we have twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. Bank of Oak Ridge SEDARs, two million, six hundred seventy-two thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars and five cents. Our Fidelity Bank checking account for the general fund is three hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety-six cents. Petty cash is one fifty, one hundred and fifty. The total investment earnings, interest earned for this fiscal year for the general fund is seventy-two thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty-six cents, of which eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents is for the month of March. Our accounts receivable for the month of March is Gary, our operator and responsible charge, AKA O R C. Salary and FICA dues for the Water Enterprise account is five hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-two cents. The shared overhead expense for the month of March reimbursement is ten thousand, one hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. The total for this fiscal year to date, shared overhead expense total is one hundred five thousand, six hundred eighty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. Our sales tax refund year-to-date is two, two thousand, one hundred twelve dollars and fifty-two cents. The total accounts receivable for the month of March is twelve thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. The total assets for the general fund, including our accounts receivable, is three million, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty-one cents. The state retirement, the town of Stokesdale contributes twelve point eight-five percent for our full-time employees, and for the month of March, that was one thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. The year-to-date for this fiscal year is ten thousand, eight hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. For the Water Enterprise account, our Bank of Oak Ridge SEDARs is five hundred twenty-one thousand, nine hundred three dollars and fifteen cents. Our capital reserve fund is one hundred eleven thousand, eight hundred seventy-six dollars and eighty cents. Our Fidelity Bank checking account for the Water Enterprise is one million, three hundred forty-five thousand, five hundred fourteen dollars and ninety cents. The Fidelity Bank savings account is forty-five thousand, sixty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. The North Carolina Capital Management Trust Fund, the balance is five hundred sixty-four thousand, seven, five hundred sixty-four thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars and four cents. The total investment earnings for this fiscal year-to-date for the Water Enterprise account is thirty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars, of which four thousand, three hundred forty dollars and thirty-two cents is for the month of March. Our accounts receivable for the water sales include active is twenty-two thousand, two hundred fifty, fifteen dollars and eighty-two cents. This also includes the March billing. Our accounts receivable active ninety-plus days past due accounts is zero. The accounts receivable inactive ninety days plus past due, twenty-six accounts, is six, six thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and sixty-six cents. The sales tax refund due to the Water Enterprise is six hundred thirty-nine dollars and sixty cents. The total assets for the Water Enterprise account is two million, seven hundred forty-eight thousand, seven hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-one cents. The accounts payable is the Water Enterprise reimbursement due to the general fund for the month of March is ten thousand, one fifty-three, fifty-five. And then the payroll for Gary, our O R C, is five hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-two cents. So the total counts payable for the month of June is ten, uh, month of June, oh my gosh, the month of March, excuse me, is ten thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. Our water capacity fees for the month of March collected was seventy-five hundred dollars. The total year-to-date water capacity fees collected are thirty-nine thousand. Before I go to my notes, are there any questions on anything?
On the balance sheet for the water, we're, we're already realizing the, the grant. The two, there's two point five one three listed in the middle of the page.
As, yes, because we have, we, we were granted, I mean, we were granted the grant.
No doubt about it, but we don't, we don't have that money yet.
No, 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 and that is why, if you, if you see at the bottom, no, that is true. We do not have that money. However, we do have six hundred thousand of that, which is in the capital, I mean, in the Bank of Oak Ridge. which is in the capital, I mean, um, in the Bank of Oak Ridge, nope, the Fidelity Water Enterprise account, excuse me, ending in zero, five, zero, four.
Okay.
Six hundred thousand is in there. So the amount that we are, uh, due is two million, five thirteen. However, we have to request reimbursement for that.
Right.
Anytime.
It's my opinion that we're realizing this is an asset too early because we could get reimbursement for that a year from now. It's, it's as the, even two years from now.
It's true, but I do also have the liability at the bottom to...
And the liability's more. How, how is that?
It's more because it has a three point one. Remember, the six hundred thousand is in the, we have six hundred thousand of that money.
Okay.
That's in the checking account.
I'm following you.
And then at the bottom, the two, the two million, we've already spent, the three point one me, this is the three point one million minus any actual checks that have been written.
Okay.
From, on the liability. So we have, it's, it's more or less, it's, it's offsetting. The liability's offsetting the asset.
I'm, I'm following you there. I'm still struggling on realizing that on the balance sheet, the two point five one three. It's just not, it's, it's not a short-term receivable. Uh, it's not money in the bank.
No, but it is money we've been granted and, well, I guess we can chat more about that.
Where would you put it if you didn't put it there?
It would have to be removed. I mean, if, there's, yeah, there's nowhere to put it, but I feel like when we've already been granted, we've already received the grant.
Well...
No, we don't have the actual...
Well, I mean, based off that logic, the, the state House Bill Fund, the one point one million would be on here as well.
Well, actually, that went through the general, right? Where we went to...
House Bill.
Yes. That ended up in, on the general side, and it's been reimbursing.
So is it showed as an asset on the balance sheet in the general?
No.
We'll take it offline, not just...
We, um, yeah. That can be...
I want to do whatever is the right thing to do, obviously, but...
I think if we've been granted, I think we should, you know, show it because we have to, like the HB, we have to request. We have to request the reimbursements for those, but if we're spending the money, I mean, I, you know...
Greensboro, we never requested a reimbursement yet because they gave us that initial...
That's right. They did gave it, they did. However, the rest we have to re- request.
Correct, after that.
Yes, after that, we have to request that amount.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Reimbursed?
That's right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
But I am definitely open to talk about that.
Sounds good. Any questions for Kim?
Um, I did, I have a couple of notes.
Okay.
Just I need to reference since I am leaving. Um, I noticed on the, we, uh, two agenda items, number eleven and number twelve, uh, the consideration of cost proposals for the janitorial services, um, I see that on the agenda. I just want to let council know that the money, um, that is under category forty thousand, item number forty-seven hundred, housekeeping, that is in the, um, the money's in the budget for that. And number twelve, under category forty thousand, item number forty-three fifty for the code book development ordinance, the budget is, is also in the budget for that as well. Money's there for those two items if you guys decide.
All right. Thank you for that. Thank you, Kim. Any questions or comments for Kim?
Don't have any. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Kim, and good luck. All right, next up on the agenda, we have public comments from the floor. I've got a couple names. Uh, Ms. Medley. Welcome.
How are you?
Good.
Good. So I am, when Robbie was speaking about the Spring Festival, that is me. I'm with the boutique here in Stokesdale, right across from the fire department. We had had some plans to shut down one fifty-eight, and after consulting with DOT, the town, and I had a meeting with, um, Chief Golden the other day, we have come up with a different plan that should work better for everybody. It shouldn't hinder any emergency services, and it should keep free flow of traffic on one fifty-eight. It would be, I sent a picture of a map to, um, Robbie. It should be just a short section of Ellisboro Road between Newberry Road and Schilling Street, and so just a quick message of what that will be. It will be a bunch of local vendors, so people from the triad area in our own community, um, food vendors as well. So we really just want to revitalize the community. We did something similar in October, and we had over, well over five hundred people come out, and it ended up really well, and I think just seeing everybody have fun and be together and, um, safe, and, you know, that was really our main goal. So I think that it'll be better and having like a more blocked-off area, that way we don't have to worry about traffic because y'all know people don't go thirty-five through there. So hopefully, having it on the backside of the buildings will be easier, safer for everybody, and I think it works for everybody else if that works for y'all.
Yeah, and do you, you have sheriff deputies?
Yes, yes. So we were, actually, when I got the call from the state to revise those plans, we were already about to, uh, we're dealing with Extra Duty Solutions, which is who the sheriff sent us to. So we were about to pay them, but we are now going to get the new letter of approval, which as soon as, um, Dangel, who is with DOT, working with, right, under Wright, as soon as he hears from the town, he says he can get that letter of approval, and we can get a new ticket and get those paid.
Okay. With that being said, great job planning the event.
Thank you.
I'm looking at a map where it's obviously on Ellisboro between Newberry and Schilling, and I believe we're pretty good from a public safety standpoint.
Yes.
The deputies are in place. Uh, have you spoken with the businesses that have storefronts right there on Ellisboro?
Yes, sir. I spoke with NAPA, and they, they, I think they're open till one that day, and so they said that that shouldn't be a problem. They, you should be able to still get in on Newberry and Schilling. You should be able to go both ways and then come back out to one fifty-eight. I spoke to the aesthetic shop, the salon, and, um, they said that that was fine. They might even participate in the event, so, yeah.
Wonderful. Uh, gentlemen, any issues here? Because I, I, I'm hoping Robbie can contact the DOT tomorrow and say...
Absolutely.
All concerns have been resolved and...
Yeah.
And, uh, any issues with closing down these streets, th- this portion of Ellisboro?
The, the town's not involved in this, so we take no liability for it.
No, I, I, I think the only question at hand is, is if we're okay with the DOT closing those streets. Robbie, am I correct? Wanting to know they like some type of okay from the town?
Yeah, so the, the Division Seven Office of DOT would like some statement from the town, uh, not necessarily saying, yes, close the street, but saying, we have no problem with you, or we have a problem, it's your decision, with your office permitting, um, the, the, the folks organizing this, uh, festival to close this street from, uh, let's see, Ellisboro Road from Schillings to Newberry between, was it nine-thirty to four-thirty?
It'll actually just be ten to four now.
Okay, ten to four.
Because it'll be a less traffic area. I don't think, we were just worried about people, you know, trying to still get up in there. But I think all that they wanted was to know that emergency situations are handled, and I think that from what we figured out, they should be able to, they can get to where we are if there's an emergency at our event, and they should be able to get anywhere back behind there with no issues.
Perfect. So it looks like about, you know, just a couple hundred yards.
Yeah. Mm-mm, yeah, not too far at all.
Segment.
I think the state is just looking for a concurrence from the town. That's...
Just since they had heard something, I think in the beginning, they want to make sure they're not stepping on any toes, as, as far as I can tell. And the guy that I was working with, he said it was his first time doing an approval, so it's probably looking for a little reassurance on his part, which is my first time as well. So learning experience for everybody.
Sure, sure. So with the revised plan, it's Ellisboro Road between Schilling Street and Newberry between ten and four.
And those bear, like, the deputies will only be on Ellisboro, so every, up and down Newberry and Schilling should still be fine, and even getting to the sides there, you know? So they'll only be on Ellisboro, just right in between, not on, uh, not in the intersection.
And, and this compromise or this revision in plans is something you reviewed with Chief Golden?
Yeah, this is what, I think that's the best possible. We sat the other morning, and we had our little laser pointers out, so we figured it all out. Yep. I think we got it figured out. And then I think if we can just get that, maybe if y'all could get with them in the morning, we can get that letter of approval and go ahead and get deputies lined up because our first priority is safety.
Well, I'm satisfied that the, with the deputies and with the agreement with the fire department that, and, uh, this hundred-yard block between Schilling and Newberry, I'm satisfied that enough to make a motion for the, uh, town council to endorse this street closing on Saturday, April twentieth, between ten AM and four PM to the DOT. And Robbie, the DOT does want this from the town, right?
Yeah. Yeah, they, they want, uh, basically a statement, uh, just concurring or not concurring. Um, so that's, uh, my understanding, uh, from speaking with Ms. Medley and then also speaking with Mr. Norris. He basically said they, they need a kind of a concurrence from the town.
I can even forward that email to you, actually, if you wanted to, like, reply, you know, something to that, because it's, I think he said, once he hears back, we should be able to get the letter of approval immediately.
I think we got an email due.
We, we got an email from, uh, from Mr. Golden, well, I was copied in on it, and then also, uh, with, uh, from Bobby Norris. Um, I think, is, are you referring to Mr. Scarlett? Is that the one?
There, uh, his name is, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, is who I've been working with directly. He's under Wright, and he works with, yeah.
Gotcha, gotcha. So somebody in Division Seven's office?
Yes.
Yeah, but, uh...
All my motions for is for the road closure, to give the concurrence or... Gentlemen, any, any discussion? Questions, concerns? I'll call question then. Jimmy?
Huh?
Tim?
Who seconded the motion?
I'm sorry, you're right.
I thought you did, Tim. No, I didn't. All right, Mr. Winfrey, I, my, my concerns with this you, issue have nothing to do with Ms. Medley or this particular event. I'm just thinking in terms of what about next time, and next time, and next time going forward. This isn't on our agenda. I didn't realize I would be asked to vote on this issue. Does the town of Stokesdale have any liability either way to, for this council to, to pass judgment on this, one way or the other, up or down?
Uh, I don't, uh, I don't see any exposure for the town. The, the right-of-way belongs to, is, is a state road. It belongs to NC DOT. The town is not involved in the, I guess we're not going to be participating, actively participating in the actual event itself. We're, we're saying we're okay with it proceeding, potentially saying we're okay with it proceeding, but we're not, um, we're not really sponsoring it. We're not, uh, active in its participation. We're just saying we don't object to the proceeding. So I don't see any exposure to the town at this point.
Procedure-wise, are we okay voting on a public comment, circumstances withstanding?
Um, yeah, we, yeah, I think, I think if someone wanted to, to make a, um, motion in response to comments from the floor, I think that's would be appropriate.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further questions? Uh, Jimmy?
Uh-huh.
Tim?
I'm going abstain based on, I don't think I have enough information to be making a decision on this matter.
Okay, and I am aye. The motion passes three to zero, and a, and abstain is a aye, is my understanding.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, and Anna, I also have you. You good? All righty.
Thank you.
All right, I have Mr. Bill Goble.
Uh, William Goble, fourteen oh two West Ridge Road, Greensboro, North Carolina. Uh, gentlemen, it's good to see you again. I haven't been here for a while. I apologize for that. Uh, as you might know, I was a little busy getting signatures. And I collected thirty-five hundred signatures, uh, going door to door, standing out front of grocery stores, um, and going down streets, talking to people, and it was one of the best experiences of my life. I got to see and I got to hear from the people of this district, which was an unbelievable experience. It was also a very difficult experience. It took up a lot of time. So, um, I apologize for not being here. I'll try and be here more often now. Uh, the other thing is, um, I thought I'd share with you, uh, the breakout of our district. We have fifty-three thousand, whoops, got to get my glasses to see the number, fifty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight registered voters in District Three. They're broken out thirty-eight percent unaffiliated, which is growing, thirty-two percent Republican, and twenty-nine percent Democrat. Stokesdale up here, you have forty-nine hundred and eighty-two registered voters. I don't know the breakout on that. But I can, I'm going to check it out and see, but I suspect it's mostly Republicans, followed by unaffiliated and then some Democrats. But, uh, I'm looking forward to being on the ballot in November. Uh, I'm going to campaign hard and, uh, let the people decide what they want, if they want, uh, me or one of the other candidates. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill. Congratulations on the signatures.
Thank you.
All right, any further, uh, public comments tonight? All right, moving right along, we go to old business. Consideration of a resolution to the Guilford County Board of Commissioners regarding sales tax distribution. This was continued from last month's meeting. Uh, Mr. Jones.
I, I wanted to get a sense of direction from council, and, uh, Mr. Riggs being, Mr. Mayor Crawford are not here this evening. This is something Mr. Wagner and I have been working on, time permitted. It's something that, uh, Mayor Crawford and I have discussed. It's, uh, been a subject of discussion, uh, going back in time with many councils and council members. And, uh, while I have a rough draft, I feel like I need co- collaboration on this from at least one council member before presenting it to council for a vote.
Okay.
I, I think, uh, you know, the, the town is in a difficult position, as the council members know, uh, ever since this sales tax money was taken away from Stokesdale. And, uh, we're surrounded by larger players in every direction, larger towns, and of course, the counties, and, uh, we're, we're the, we're the small kid on the block, and, uh, we're at the mercy of a lot of these organizations in the state, state legislature. And, uh, they, they, uh, they take money and they give money to us, and at the end of the day, we kind of hope we get more money than we, than we have taken. I, I don't like the way the system is, and I think there is some hope going of getting the sales tax and distribution money back through the legislature. And I believe that we kind of need to get a fresh no from the Guilford County Commissioners, because I don't anticipate them responding positively to our request. But with prayer and hope and, you know, anything's possible. I think we would be neglectful not to at least attempt to do so. And along the way, it also helps to educate our, our citizens about where their money's going and, and, uh, how, how the town receives funds. So I, I think it's a worthwhile, uh, endeavor, but I, I'd like a, a sense of direction from, from y'all here about whether to keep pursuing this or not. You know, I'm, I'm flexible. I, I think it's worthwhile. And it is budget season. I was trying to get it done before the, uh, Guilford County approved their budget. And they can't possib, I don't think they could vote on the matter until next March for the, the following year. So...
So, to my knowledge, this changed about twenty years ago, going from per capita to ad valorem.
Yeah, I, I provided that. We just recently had to get those minutes from the state archives. The county didn't have them, couldn't find them. In our last budget workshop meeting, I provided you with those, those minutes. I don't have them in front of me. I, I think I got them in my case here, but it's, uh, it's been a long time. And, uh, the other aggravating thing is when this decision was made, it was, you know, a split vote along party lines, uh, five, four. And, uh, I think it did a great disservice to Stokesdale, and, uh, I think one of our problems is just trying to explain to our citizens what happened, why it happened, uh, what needs to change to, to flip it back the other way. And, and I think, uh, there's some possibility. I've had some conversations with adjoining towns, and some of the leadership there is open to having a, a new dialogue about this very issue, so that has given me some hope also. So I, I'd like to keep pursuing it, but I don't want to be the only council member engaged in this endeavor.
What are you pursuing? Are you pursuing to get a no from them so we can go to the legislature?
I'd like to get a proper resolution submitted to them that covers all the bases, that provides detailed explanation to our citizens about the history, uh, the town's funding and, and, uh, how, how the town... Basically, the citizens of this town were told that you'll never have to have a property tax because we're going to get the sales tax distribution money. tax, because we're going to get the sales tax distribution money. There's no doubt about that, the leadership at the time made that statement. Maybe they knew, maybe they didn't know, I hope they didn't know, that it could be changed in the future. And then about the time the town started maturing a little bit, and started providing services to the citizens, the county took this money away. And the other aspect of this, it seems to be lost on a lot of people, is that we pay back a lot of these, that funding we receive from the state to buy services from Guilford County in the form of animal control, fire marshal, county planner, you know, whatever else is in our budget going back to Guilford County. And so, you know, even, I'm perfectly okay with the idea the county might have to raise some of those charges if they change the sales tax distribution back. It just bothers me that our citizens, they are paying the sales tax, and they're not getting any benefit from that sales tax.
Going back to the citizens, something that would concern me with this is, is the way it is now. In Stokesdale, the citizens do not pay a town municipal tax, but of course, we pay taxes to Guilford County, and also, we pay a fire district tax. Starting with the fire district, they, because we're at an ad valorem tax, they receive $284,000 of their budget annually, through the ad valorem. If we went back to per capita, they would not receive that money. And I don't believe the fire department has a way of cutting $284,000 out of their budget. It's a small budget as it is. So the flip side of that is if they didn't have that money, the safe assumption would be they'd have to get it by increasing taxes.
Hold on a second, wait. You're saying if we went back per capita, they wouldn't get any tax money?
Yeah, that's absolutely right.
Is that... You wouldn't get any?
Sales tax, no, we would still get our 10 cent rate, but they would take that $284,000 sales tax amount away.
Really? I didn't know that. Why is that? I mean, if we're per capita, why would it...
I really don't know, Jimmy, whenever they done that, that was obviously a decision that was made that, you know, the higher-ups above us, the county paid, but when they decided to distribute it, I'm assuming that they felt like the most fair way to help everybody was, was to help the emergency services, or all the fire departments in all areas of Guilford County.
So you're getting 200 and some thousand?
Yes.
So we lose 200 and some, how much would we get if we did? I mean...
Depends on how much your taxes is.
Well, how many, I mean, I'm talking about per capita. If we did that, even, I mean, are you talking about we'd get a million dollars? Would we get...
The town of Stokesdale, it could be a million dollars.
Because, I mean, that'd be the case if they lost, maybe we could do something. I don't want to see them losing money.
No, I don't either.
But if it did, and we got a lot, then, you know, there'd be something done there, but...
It could be.
So that's even if we did a carve-out, if the state did a carve-out for us to do per capita, you'd still lose that money then. Is that what you're saying? Why ain't y'all ever said that to me?
Never came up.
Really, nobody's ever asked.
I'm sitting here hammering old blessed one night about it, you know, wanting to get a carve-out. I didn't know that was part of the equation. So go ahead, Tim.
Mr. Foy, can I speak? You can.
Mr. Foy, when I put this on the agenda before our last, when it was coming up on the last meeting agenda, I did contact the president of the Fire District Board and have a conversation with him about this very thing, about the amounts they were receiving, how this might impact the fire department, and asked them to be involved. I certainly have not cut the fire department out of the loop in any way, I have communicated adequately, I thought, with the fire department. And, you know, I really don't have any objection with a plan to, if we could receive those funds to give, to basically take that amount and allocate it to the fire departments, as long as it's legal, I don't have any issue with that. You know, nobody wants to see any fireman pushing a fire truck because it's out of fuel. But I think that, again, this is, with respect to the fire department, our responsibility is to the town of Stokesdale, not the fire district, we need to put the town of Stokesdale's business first. With respect to the fire department, I'm sure they understand that they have a board that attends to their business, and I'm certainly open to any conversation with the fire department leadership, board of directors, or what have you. But I certainly did cover that base, and I don't know...
Is that included in the rough draft of the resolution?
It's something that, not at the moment, but certainly something I'm willing to put in there, and that's what I'm talking about, that I'd like some collaboration with another council member to move forward, to see if we can cover all our bases. Don't have a problem with even allowing, you know, the fire department to have some input on it, no problem. Just trying to do what's best for our little town here, and defend our citizens from the powers that be. Our citizens pay a lot of taxes to Guilford County, our citizens pay a lot in sales tax. And if we don't stick up for our citizens in this regard, who's going to?
Yeah, I like where you're coming from there, sticking up for the citizens. Guilford County would lose about $12 million if they changed this, so I have no confidence that they can cut that out of their budget.
Well, the last time I was into the nuts and bolts of this, it would have required a 2% adjustment in the county budget, you know, cut spending 1%, increase taxes 1%. And again, I wouldn't have a problem if the county increased the fees they charge the small towns for, the services the county provides. I just think it's a much fairer way to distribute sales tax money. I don't know who concocted this plan many years ago, wherein you combine distribution from sales tax money and property tax money. To me, it does nothing but confuse the citizens. It's just, I think something, it should be eliminated statewide, in my opinion, and that's just how I feel about it.
Jimmy, you got anything?
Well, you know, you're talking about the, I know we're supposed to take care of the town, but the fire department is the town. As far as I'm concerned, we keep the fire department open and close this place down. You know, I mean, really, I think they'd come get me if I had a heart attack, I don't think y'all would. If you did, you wouldn't know what to do.
Look, before we know I can respond, we can bring that thing we got hanging on the wall beside the front door, it's computerized, we'll stick that thing on you.
I would be glad for y'all to share with a problem. I'm not against us trying to get our money back, but we do need to be careful we don't step on the landmine. I've also heard that possibly if they went back to that formula, that they'd have to raise the county taxes, if everybody in the county, which I wouldn't want to happen. So if we could get a carve-out through the legislature, and we, you know, could make up for the, if it was good enough to make up for what they would lose, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But I don't want those guys to go losing, they'll have to raise the tax. So I mean, you just, you know, you're just robbing Peter to pay Paul, as far as I'm concerned, if we're not careful. So, you know, we can pursue it, but we just need to, I don't know, it's not, it's very complicated, it seems like to me. I don't think it's as simple as just having everything changed back.
Well, actually, life was pretty simple before the county tampered with this, I disagree. It was very simple, how it was handled and how that money was distributed, you know.
So what do you want them to do? You want them to, I mean, they're not going to change it, they're not going to change it back. They've already said some of the items. I mean, if you're trying to get a no from them, I understand that, and then let's go to the state legislature to try to get a carve-out. I can understand that, but, you know, if we can send a resolution, if, as what you want to do, I'd like to get our sales tax money back. But, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to get back a million dollars, and then the citizens get taxed on the other end a million dollars. I mean, you know, there's more to this, it's not just that simple. So we need, you know, we need the figures and be careful what we're asking for, we can step over the fence to grain of pastures and step right, and you know what, we're not careful. You know, I want the money back just as bad as you do, I mean, I think we need it, you know. So I don't have a problem with it, but I just don't think it's as simple as you intend to make. But, you know, if you want to get all those facts and figures together and all that, I'd be, you know, I'm okay with it. To see.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Not for me.
All right, is there a motion? All right, seeing that there is no motion, we'll move on to new business. Consideration of North Carolina League of Municipalities Health Benefits Trust Renewal for Fiscal Year 24-25, that's next year. Robbie, you want to take this one?
Yeah, sure. So as I'm sure you all know, right now, the town offers, has a, offers dental vision and short-term disability insurance to full-time employees. Right now, you all have that through the North Carolina League of Municipalities. It runs slightly different than our healthcare insurance, as far as expiration of the current policy, they run on a fiscal year basis, just like we do. So where we upgraded the, I can't say upgraded, renewed the health insurance in January to start in February, this one will, you all have to consider renewing now for July 1st. So the current plan ends June 30th. And the good news is, there's no rate change for all three, dental vision and disability are the same rate now as what you're currently paying.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we renew that for next fiscal year, that the town pay 85% of that figure, which I believe is only $64, the total, the total cost is $64 per full-time employee.
Yes.
So the town pay 80, and that's per pay period or month?
I believe it's per pay period.
Hmm.
That's a good question. I see it taken out of my check every pay period, say that much. Yeah. Per pay period.
And it's in the budget, there was no increases?
Yeah.
We did increase the amount we were paying, right? What was it, we doing, 80?
Paying 80.
But we already voted on that, didn't we?
Yeah, that's health insurance, that's done, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And the 85 mirrors the health insurance?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's, that was what the motion that was made and approved back in February, or January, was to pay 85% of the health insurance premium.
And again, it's in the budget.
Yes, oh yeah, it's in the budget. Kim said it was in the budget, so she addressed that before she left.
And this will go into effect next fiscal year.
Correct.
It's in the proposed budget for next year, and that we're still making some, still a work in process.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. A move that we move forward with the North Carolina League of Municipalities Insurance for Dental, Short-Term Disability, and Vision, and that for the FY 24-25 year, that the town will pay 85% of each employee's...
I will second.
All right.
I'm sorry, was you finished?
No, that's it.
Okay.
And again, the... All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Just one question, is this an authorization, 85% of what? I'm just thinking about Kim Thacker being able to write that check to pay for this insurance.
So it comes out of each employee's paycheck?
Correct.
It's deducted from that? So it would be the 85% of the monthly figure of 64 bucks?
Yeah, I got that part, I'm just saying, there's no monetary limit on this, so it's, you feel like we're good here? I'm just asking.
It needs to be in the budget, and in the budget, we're going to budget for two full-time employees.
Just ask...
Three.
Three, yeah.
Excuse me, three full-time employees.
Correct. Yeah, one of the employees doesn't, this is one of those ones where you can, I mean, obviously, you can pick or choose any of them, you don't have to take them all. Right now, we have two employees that have all three, dental vision and short-term disability, and we have one employee that's just opted to do the short-term disability, so...
So this will be for three full-time employees next year, just same as today?
I guess if it creates a problem, Ms. Thacker will let us know, and we'll address it then.
We could do that, for sure. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Jimmy?
Hi.
Tim?
Aye.
And I'm also aye. Number 10, consideration of resolution consenting to the addition of Lambert Lake Road, Seven Springs Court, Quell Crossing Road, in the Moores Mill subdivision. So this is adding that to the secondary road maintenance system of North Carolina, the DOT. So this is a pretty common practice, as subdivisions get built out, turning the roads over to the state. So with that, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-01, and this is a resolution consenting to the addition of Lambert Lake Road, Seven Springs Court, and Quell Crossing Road within the old Moores Mill subdivision to the secondary road maintenance system of the state of North Carolina.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Winfrey, have you reviewed all these documents?
I reviewed the resolution, and it appears to be in order. I didn't review all the backup information about the specification of the property, but...
Well, you don't see any cause for a pause here.
No, I think it's in order, it appears to be in order to me.
All right. Any further questions? We'll call question, Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
I'm also aye. I have a number 11, consideration of cost proposals for janitorial services at Stokesdale Town Hall and Stokesdale Town Park. Mr. Wagner?
Let me get to that, sorry. So yes, so at the time the agenda packet went out on Tuesday, we had one proposal. Earlier this afternoon, Mr. Jones provided me with a second proposal, and I printed that and put it in front of you all. So as you know, our current vendor, who has been doing this service, has, today is the last day that that service will be done by that vendor, and so the town, unless everybody wants to grab a brush and start scrubbing, we need to find somebody to start doing it.
Property committee.
And so after, after we learned of our current vendor's plans to leave, we started reaching out to folks, requesting information on what it would cost for them to come here, and we only had one person to respond to us at the time of the agenda being put together. And this individual has offered to clean the town hall building and the town park bathrooms, and collect the trash at the park, for a total of $500 per month. Based on the requirements that the town has, she has provided me with her certificate of liability insurance. I have called her insurance provider to confirm that this is correct, and that it's still a, still in effect, I guess is the best way to put that. And she spoke with her, she's okay with doing this at this rate for a year, if that's the term that you all want to do.
Robbie, what's the frequency of cleaning for town hall on the bid for, in our packets from Ms. Willard?
So let's see, so it's done every, let's see, during, from May 1st to October 31st, it's every other week, and then twice per week at the town park, I believe. It's listed on the scope of work.
Now it switches in the summer.
Correct.
In the summer, and once every other week.
Once every other week here, twice a week at the park.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. Whatever we had on the service agreement last time has not changed.
And as she does the basket, she knows to go to the basketball court and do the trash.
Yep, that's been added, so Mr. Jones has kind of expressed a little bit of concern about the current service agreement that we have, just more so questions. In that service agreement, in the scope of work, I added a section that says trashcans at the basketball and pickleball court, and we've done... and we've done a little bit of, uh, verbiage changing under section four for the insurance requirement, kind of, uh, separating, and Mr. Winfrey can speak to this, separating the requirement for general liability versus workers' compensation insurance. And so, um, if you all decided to approve one of these proposals that we've got, um, in that service agreement, Mr. Winfrey would kind of put together what we already have and, and present it to the cleaner.
Okay, I want, Mr. Winfrey, I want you to listen to this, because I wanna make a disclosure. I know this young lady, I haven't spoke to her in several years, um, even though she's doing this, uh, uh, I guess she approached you, didn't she, Karen? And said something? Oh, you said something to her? Okay, but, uh, this is somebody that she had worked with, uh, in the ACES program for a lot of years, and, um, she's, the, the, the young lady still works at the school, uh, so I do know her, do know of her. Actually, my son did mechanic work two different times on her cars, probably five years ago, so I'm just disclosing that, so that everything, you know, nobody's coming up saying I'm trying to put somebody into a favor or anything like that, uh, we're gonna look at both proposals, so do you?
Well, so long as neither you nor your family members have any financial interest in this contract, then you're not allowed to recuse yourself from it. I mean, you've disclosed it, um, for the public, but there's no financial conflict that would allow you to recuse yourself from it.
Right, I'm not trying to recuse myself, I'm just letting everybody know, so that nothing comes up later. Matter of fact, I don't know if I talked to her in two years. But you have.
As, I, I can't speak too much on the, uh, second quote that we've got here, but, um, based off what I'm seeing here, uh, it's a, it's a separate quote, um, from another individual who has offered to, uh, do the same services, uh, that being, uh, cleaning at the town hall and the town park, uh, same parameters as the, the last scope of work, and, uh, it's five hundred and thirty dollars per month for the park, and one hundred and eighty dollars per month for the town hall. And I've also confirmed, uh, this lady has sent me her certificate of liability insurance, I've called the insurance provider and confirmed that it is a valid certificate of insurance, but do note that it expires in eleven days, so we just have to make sure we get an updated version of that in eleven days.
Good.
Now, Tim had approached this lady, so.
Mr. Landers, if you're asking me to tell counsel what to know, I'd be glad to. Um, I got this reference from Stokesdale Parks and Rec from the president of the board, they, uh, the same company cleans the bathrooms there, and it's not an individual, it's a cleaning company. They maintain, uh, public liability insurance, workman's comp insurance, and, uh, I've been told they're bonded, I don't, hadn't researched anything pertaining to said bond. I did personally, uh, show this lady the, the town hall facility and the, and the bathrooms, along with her daughter, and, uh, I don't think there's necessarily anything to add to that, other than that they have a little bit more depth with employees and vehicles and resources than, than one individual. Uh, according to my math and my understanding, if you add five thirty and one eighty, you would get seven hundred and ten dollars a month. Counsel would be looking at that versus five hundred dollars a month with the other quote. And, uh, looking in the audience, I don't see, see anybody here from either one of these companies, so, uh, there's nobody to speak on their behalf.
Robbie, Tim has a scope of work. That he used.
Yes, same one was.
Has the other candidate, it's, we're apples to apples here.
Apples to apples, I provided, um, but so, uh, printed off a copy when Mr. Jones came by, and we provided that to the, to the young lady that came that day, and then same thing when, uh, when Mrs. Willard came by the office, oh, maybe two weeks ago, it was on a Monday. I provided her with the same scope of work and same service agreement, so she's understanding of what, what's entailed. One thing I will ask for clarification on is, uh, and it's something I, I think would be good for everybody to discuss, is what time do you want them to come, what day and time? Um, I've, I've, I haven't had much of a chance to speak with, uh, the, the lady that, uh, Parks and Rec has recommended, uh, but I did speak with, uh, Ms. Willard, informed her that most of our town meetings at least are held on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so usually those are not the best nights. Um, I've got an email from her saying that she's available to clean anytime before two P M. and after five P M., Monday through Friday. She can do anytime, uh, Monday through Friday, starting June the eleventh, so that doesn't mean she can start June the eleventh, she can start now. After June the eleventh, she can do anytime, and, uh, of course, she said that she's flexible on the weekends as well. So, um, our, since I've been here, I'm coming up on my two-year mark, the cleaners always come at the end of the day or after business hours, so it's something you all want to decide.
I think that, they need, I think she was doing Tuesdays, and what was the other day she was doing? She came on, was it Tuesday she came on?
I can't reme-, I, I.
I, I believe it's Tuesday, we need to change that to Monday.
Okay.
Because of the park.
Understood.
The trash cans getting full.
Okay.
Um, up for the weekend, we need to change that to Monday.
Okay.
And probably Friday.
Okay.
Because there's not as much action going on in the.
Hundred percent, yep.
Okay, so you wanna do Mondays and Fridays?
I do.
Okay, alright, let's make sure that, um, we'll add that into the service agreement now. That's for the park, what about town hall?
You know, I know you guys don't like people in, making noise and vacuuming and everything, but Tim's brought up some things at times, I think, you know, we're fine with, um, it, it, I don't know who we're gonna take for sure, but.
Do keep in mind, we're closed on Fridays, so.
Well, you know, she could do that on a.
Monday.
There's only one day.
Correct, correct.
So.
But that could be done on Monday.
That could be done on a Monday, or, you know, any day, I mean, the, the parks, you know, the, the two days during the summer.
Correct.
And, uh, and probably Monday will be the day she'd need to do it when it goes back to one.
Okay.
On, on that, uh, we start getting a lot of, we may have to amend it and, um, and get two days during the winter, I don't think we will, but it's always a possibility for it to grow. That, that's, that's, you know, not matter right now.
Yeah.
So.
That's fine.
That's, that's the council to talk about, I, I, firstly, I wouldn't have a problem here, we got cameras, um, but I see, you know, you never know, uh, Tim's made good points about that, if he wants to make them now, that's fine. Um, I, I, you know, what do you guys prefer, y'all don't?
Well, um, I, I've talked to staff about it, obviously, we prefer that they come after hours, so that we don't have to listen to vacuuming and stuff while we're trying to meet with people, talk on the telephones and whatnot. Um, if you want them to be supervised, I can't say that they'll be directly supervised while they're here cleaning during the day, I don't intend to follow them around and watch them, and I certainly don't intend on any staff member to stay after business hours to watch them, uh, I think that's a waste of, of staff time. Um, but, uh, as far as the safety aspect, I certainly understand, you don't want things to go off, um, it's a public building, we've got cameras, ninety-nine point nine percent of the documents here are public documents, everything that's not's under lock and key, so, um, I think staff would prefer that they come after hours, that would just entail giving them a key, an alarm code, stuff like that, that's one thing to consider. Um, but that's, that's, I've talked to staff about it, that's our side of it, but it's obviously your decision, that's just our input.
During the, during the summer, they're only gonna be here one time every two weeks.
Correct.
I don't know, what do you guys think?
Mr. Foy, if I may address some of these points?
Please.
Uh, Mr. Wagner and I did discuss which days were preferable, if it was during the day, and I think that was Monday and Tuesday, I, I did pass that on to Ms. Corona. Um, I don't think there, I think they have enough flexibility with their company to be able to accommodate the town's needs. I didn't specifically discuss with her cleaning in the evening, so, um, I don't wanna speak for her, in that matter, she may or may not have anybody available, uh, you know. So with that said, uh, there was an important point I wanted to cover regarding insurance, Mr. Wagner and I had a conversation, he contacted our insurance carrier, and, uh, our, as I understand it, our workman's comp policy will not extend to cover vendors that don't have workman's comp. Our, uh, rep on the other end of the email, uh, stated that they considered it to be a best practice for a town to require the vendors to have, of course, general liability insurance and workman's comp. Uh, one of these vendors has the workman's comp supposedly, and the other one, I don't think does. Uh, that's a distinction I think counsel needs to consider between the two, I don't have a real strong opinion one way or the other, it's not like she's going to be cutting trees or painting the water tank, but, uh, nonetheless, I think it's important, uh, and, uh, it is an expense that has to be passed on to the customer for when somebody does have the workman's comp, and that, that's why, so if you ha-, carry that coverage, so, I, I don't know if Mr. Winfrey wants to, wants to weigh in and, and try to advise us in regards to when we should require workman's comp and when we shouldn't, if you wanna, I'd, I'd be certainly interested in anything you've got to say here.
Well, uh, our law requires any employer with more than two employees has to have workers' comp, so, so it sounds like this one bidder may have more than two employees, and so they.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not talking, I'm talking about our, the town of Stokesdale's exposure to liability, should one, I don't know, fall off a ladder, trip over a mop.
Right, and then that's where, um, if, if a town had any liability, that's where the town's own policy would kick in, uh, to defend the town from any tort claim, if there was, if there was such a claim.
From, uh, I'd, our carrier says that our workman's comp won't extend to that, cover that, so you're saying that would be under our public liability?
Yeah, in other words, if someone.
But since we've hired these people, they're, they're not members of the public, they're, they're working for the town as a vendor.
They, they're an independent contractor.
Yeah.
That's right, and so they're, so as an independent contractor, um, we're not responsible for, for their injuries, uh, unless we've created some unsafe condition on the property ourself, uh, that caused them to be injured, in which case, our, our policy would kick in, uh, if I'm understanding your question correctly. In other words, if we have any exposure, we have covered, we have insurance covers, that covers us if we get sued by somebody saying that they were injured because of some premises liability on our part. I'm not sure I'm answering your question, but that's.
Are we covered? It's pretty simple, are we covered? Are we okay with her, with her general liability? Have we been doing this for how long with the, how, how long did that young lady?
Um.
Two years?
Uh, I believe so, maybe.
I mean, that's what we had for two years.
Yeah, but, so there's.
When's the last time she was injured?
So, her liability.
Never.
Would, would kick in if, if she did something that, you know, if she did something that burned the hu-, burned the place down, that would kick in for her, her coverage, her liability coverage.
I, I understand that, I'm talking about if, if she is injured, breaks her leg, or, you know, uh, trips over a banana peel, and I, I mean, I.
Right, and, and if there's, if there's, if there's some injury that they say the town is responsible for, um, because of some unsafe condition that the town has allowed to exist, then our liability coverage would kick in, regardless of what is, a member of the public, independent contractor, the same rule would apply.
Well, out in the real world, you know, with business and what have you, this, this is handled all sorts of ways for all kinds of different reasons.
Right.
When it gets into a government setting, I, I, I don't have any choice but to ask the town attorney.
Well, and, and I guess in, in answer to the question, is the town better off with an employee, with a independent contractor who has workers' comp versus one that doesn't? Probably at the margin, yes, because that's, that's another, uh, source of, uh, recovery for, for anybody who's injured while they're working here. But it's your decision, is it worth two hundred and ten dollars more per month, if, uh, if I'm reading the figures correctly?
And the oth-, and the other things I find is, oftentimes, the owner themselves are excluded on a workman's comp policy anyway, when you get into the fine print, so that becomes an additional wrinkle.
Well, I will say that in, in my law firm, for example, and we have workers' comp, because I, you know, if somebody's crossing the street, go to the courthouse and get hit by a car, that's a workers' comp claim, um, and so I had the option, do I wanna be covered, do I not wanna be covered? As the owner of the company, and I've opted to be covered, so you can opt to be covered, at least I could, opt to be covered or opt not to be covered. Uh, it was more expensive if I'm covered, but I decided to spring for it, so, um, so the owner can be covered, it's just maybe additional expense if they, if they are.
So, for example, larger town, like, you wouldn't be doing work for the city of Greensboro, Winston-Salem, probably Corneville without workman's comp, no matter what job it was, uh, in my experience, you know, so, uh, I think what I've, what I hear from you is we can proceed with caution, but you couldn't, couldn't guarantee we wouldn't have a problem.
Right, there's, there's no, there's never any guarantees, but I think there's low risk of a problem, um, with either scenario.
If, for example, we were hiring a tree service, I, I would be more adamant that we needed to find a service that had workman's comp, um, that.
Right.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Alright, any further discussion? Well, gentlemen, y'all did a great job getting bids, I will, uh, defer a motion to you, you guys.
I'm just thankful we got two, two, two people that wanna do this workforce.
We defer the motion to you. I'm serious.
Actually, you're impartial here, you didn't, you, you.
Yeah, I mean, we kinda got.
Either way, be our guest. Well, then, then let's have some discussion. It's a two hundred and ten dollar a month delta. So, you, you know, if, if we sign up for that, we're paying twenty-four hundred dollars a year annually for workers' comp. I'm not sure how much a workers' comp policy costs, but.
Sixteen hundred and seventy dollars would be what it would cost this young lady, she'd already checked.
So, uh, so if it's sixteen hundred dollars, we're, we're.
It is expensive, I've had policies, it's expensive.
Yeah.
Well, for a two hundred and ten dollar delta, we could be paying all of her workers' comp policy, potentially, the, uh, the alternate, the seven hundred and ten dollar bid. So, what, what I'm saying is, two hundred and ten dollars a month for workers' comp, twenty-four hundred dollars a year, is that, is that a reasonable price that we would pay?
I don't know, as so often the case is, when we ask somebody for proposals, if we don't provide the exact, you know, uh, specifications for plans, job, what have you, then, then we get back these variables, and, and there's really no answer between the two.
Jimmy, what do you think?
Uh, well, Mr. Winfrey, from what I understand, is saying that we're not putting ourselves in harm's way. Because, I mean, we've already been that way for two years, and I don't know where we were at before that, I'm pretty sure that the folks that we had before, uh, the gentleman wasn't, and he had a liability, I'm not positive on that one, I may be wrong.
Alright.
But if, if you're saying, and, I mean, even at that, if she bought her own workers' comp, she would be less expensive, not much, it wouldn't be much, be forty, fifty dollars or something different, which is, I say much, that's six hundred bucks, it would spend on a bench or something, but, um, but you are saying that we're not putting ourselves in harm's way.
Yeah, I'm not seeing much exposure for the, for the city, uh, for the town to, to not require workers' comp, I think at the margin, you might be, it'd be better if, if I did have workers' comp, but it's, it's not much exposure for the town.
Right, okay.
What are we requiring them to have?
Um, in the services agreement, uh, I can't remember exactly, I, I know we require, uh, general liability of a million dollars, and then I think it said workers' comp if required by state law, which is, of course, if you have two or more employees.
Right, well, uh, l- l- let's, let's unpack the, the Ms. Willard's proposal.
Yes.
She, she is, I'm assuming this is a one-man operation, one-woman operation, uh, you, you know, what about in the, something to consider is, in the event of, uh, you know, she were to fall ill and could not come out one week, or, you know, go on a, a, a family vacation over the summer, uh, how would the work get done then? That's, you know, something to consider, it's, it.
It is, that is something, I mean, we had the same situation for the last two years, too.
Right.
But that is something to think about.
She's under contract, she would be the one responsible for.
Yeah.
Handling that.
Okay.
And, and I, I, and as we go along here, I'm assuming we're gonna want Mr. Winfrey to, you know, incorporate our, our standard services agreement here.
Of course.
With this, right?
And I'm assuming this quote, it just says five hundred dollars, I'm assuming that's five hundred dollars per month.
Correct, yes.
Doesn't say that, but I'm assuming that's what.
Yeah, that is five hundred dollars per month for both, so that's not five hundred each, that's five hundred dollars per month to clean the town hall. Yeah, that is five hundred dollars per month for both, so that's not five hundred each, that's five hundred dollars per month to clean the town hall building and the town park.
Yeah.
Well, the way I read the current agreement is the town has not been requiring workman's comp, and and that's where we're starting from here, you know.
What do y'all prefer, fellas? Tell me what you prefer of the two.
Well, I guess one other question I have is the, I haven't seen the other, the new proposal, but this proposal doesn't spell out how many times a week that they're coming in once a week or.
Well, we're, we're.
That's gonna be our.
We're gonna proceed in such a manner here that she has to agree to our terms to move forward.
Right.
Correct.
And and so that's just a a given.
Right.
And she was given the scope of work that we typically attach to the service agreement.
Okay, gotcha.
So it's 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 a kind of a, or understanding that everything that's been quoted, and I think that's the case for both, is that it's in compliance with their service agreement and the scope of work. In that scope of work document is where it states twice a week in the park in the summer, um, and then once at town hall every other week, and then it changes in the in the wintertime or fall.
Well, I'll tell you how I feel here, if the other lady was five hundred dollars and and uh, this other lady was five hundred. I mean, you know, I would go the other way, save the twenty seven hundred dollars.
It's a two thousand five hundred and twenty dollar annual cost delta.
So, I mean, if it was vice versa, it, um, I would, I'd save the money. I mean, you know that.
Sure.
I had a, uh, somebody that was a friend of mine, fifteen hundred dollars difference on the lawn contract that time. And it could easily, this new, this this guy we got, which has done a great job.
Okay.
Was was brand new.
Yep.
And, um, you know, the other company was in existence and, and, you know, we could have used that if we'd wanted to, but we went with the, and that was a twenty seven thousand dollar contract.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, the quote, uh, dated April third, twenty twenty four from Cato, for custodial cleaning, uh, with Ms. Brittany Willard at a cost of five hundred dollars per month and six thousand dollars per year. And for Mr. Winfrey to draft up that service agreement.
And and just to confirm, in that service agreement, uh, we can certainly add in the scope of work, um, what are the time parameters here? Cause if you all don't, uh, tell us, we're gonna tell them to come in the evenings.
I don't have any problem. I'm expecting to start right away.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Cleaning after business hours versus cleaning during business hours.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me.
It's okay, that's fine. I could have clarified that better.
This is the way I feel about it. You guys should be locking everything up like it's supposed to be. There shouldn't be anything out. And that is, that's kind of your responsibility. If there's something out, and something like that were to happen, you know, they shouldn't have done it.
That's right.
They all shouldn't have left it out.
Absolutely.
So if you want it to be done, that's why you've got to make sure, and you're in charge.
And that goes for council as well. You all have access to the same records I do.
I don't come in here.
Make sure you lock them up.
How many times you ever seen me use that code on that?
That's okay.
Now, now wait a minute before somebody takes that to heart.
I don't come in.
We don't have access to the fireproof file cabinets and and, you know, some of the computer systems.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just.
I don't have access to clothes.
I know what you mean, but.
Yeah, understood.
And don't want it.
You want the key, I'll tell you where it's at.
I can't come here when somebody's here, I don't need to be here.
But we, like I said, I mean, there's very few things here. We have close session minutes and we have utility bills. Uh, and then any, maybe some correspondence with the attorney. Other than that, everything's pretty much locked up. All the computers are set to lock themselves at the end of the day, so.
I'm okay with y'all doing that one, but the Monday and the Friday.
Mm-hmm.
I think that that needs to be done.
Guaranteed, okay.
Needs to be done.
Well, the other thing I've mentioned, should the circumstances being what they are, um, it's a tedious world. We will always want to be cautious irregardless of who it is. Should we conduct a background check on on this this company, on the individuals working for this company, which at the moment is just just one person? Uh, that's another question I think we should ask ourselves.
I will say this, they do background checks for the school. She couldn't work at the school all these years with a bad background.
So we.
But if you want to do it.
No, I I I'm just saying it's something we should always be conscious of.
Absolutely.
And and so if if we're consciously waiving that, knowing that, um, that, you know, fine by me, I ac- I accept your word on it, Jimmy Laners.
Well, I know what Karen has to go through.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and she, you know, if her background was bad, she wouldn't be working at the school.
Yeah, see, since, you know, you're the one that can say that, I can't, cause I don't know her.
I understand, no, no, I understand what you're saying, and I'm still okay if you feel like you need to, you know, have it pulled, but, uh, I don't want to, I don't want to be, I don't want you to have to be down there cleaning bathrooms, uh, next couple of weeks waiting to get here.
Well, it sounds like Ms. Willard may have other people coming in to help her too, so we don't know necessarily that they, but it was clear. So I would, I'd recommend we probably have background check of anybody that's gonna be in the building after hours.
That's a, that's a good idea. If she happens to bring somebody, you need to tell her that before they can come.
Can you run those?
Good enough.
Well, Mr. Foy, would you consider adding that, incorporating that into your motion? That any, uh, anybody assisting Ms. Willard would be required to complete a background check and be identified to the town before performing any work, entering the building after hours, that sort of thing?
I would, Robbie, if you could just include that in the motion, uh, as.
I think that's a good idea.
As Tim stated, uh, Jimmy, do you maintain your second? I'm not sure if you did second.
I was waiting for Tim to do it.
Okay.
Then I seconded the motion. I thought you had a second, excuse me.
We we have a motion, we have a second. Is there further discussion? Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
I'm aye. Item number twelve, consideration of cost proposals professional, for professional assistance in the revision of the town of Stokesdale's development ordinance to ensure alignment with the requirements outlined in North Carolina General Statute one sixty D. Robbie, I appreciate you, the work you have done on this, uh, as we discussed, I'd like for you to.
Take it over.
Yes, sir.
I got you. So, uh, as you all, uh, discussed, uh, either last meeting or the meeting before, we want to reach out to get some price, uh, prices on assistance with the updating our development ordinance to be compliant with one sixty D. And, uh, the three big ones that come to mind with me, of course, were the PTRC, Piedmont Tribe Regional Council, UNC School of Government, and the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Uh, reached out to the PTRC, they were the first to respond, um, and so I'll go over that one first. Um, Mr. Reese, uh, who's the assistant director of the PTRC, reached out, he's a, um, very good contact. He basically said that, um, if we, uh, if the town wanted to move forward with their assistance, it would be six thousand dollars, and they've got their kind of scope of work attached, uh, and that is the fee if we are not a member. If the town chooses to become a member, the the, uh, membership is due on a, uh, a population or per capita basis. So the membership would be one thousand three hundred and four dollars. That's something that's annual, but you always have the option to opt out. And as a members rate, that would be four thousand eight hundred and four dollars. And that's, um, the inclusion of the membership due as well as the service. So, um, definitely a better deal if you're a member, um.
Let me stop you, Robbie. What's the price if you're a member?
The price, if you are a member, is four thousand eight hundred and four dollars.
That's including the membership dues?
Yes, the total for dues and one sixty D project at members rate would be four thousand eight hundred and four dollars. Uh, yeah, that's right, I believe so.
So we're basically, we're gonna save twelve hundred dollars by joining up, but then they're expecting us, didn't I see somewhere where they expected us to continue?
Continue.
That that would be the implication.
I see. Yeah, yeah.
And and participate.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and participate, and they have, um, monthly meetings in Kernersville. Um, you know, I thought that his email here was a little bit more black and white. I see that as total for dues and one sixty, yeah, that's correct, yeah, yes. One, four thousand eight hundred and four dollars is the total amount for your annual dues for twenty four, twenty five, which runs on a fiscal year basis, and your, uh, one sixty D assistance, I'm sorry, development ordinance assistance for one sixty D compliance. So, and they have a very detailed, um, scope of work of what they would do. Um, basically, this is not to exceed six thousand, so they would not exceed six thousand. So, um, after speaking with Mr. Winfrey, we reached out, I reached out to the School of Government, he, I'm sorry, uh, North Carolina League of Municipalities, he did as well. And, uh, his contact didn't get back to him, and luckily I had somebody that did get back to me, uh, but the news wasn't the best. Uh, they don't offer that service in-house. They offer, uh, basically, they will give you the names of people that will. Um, those people being, uh, municipalities that have done something similar. I think I was given a list of Meben, Wake Forest, and one other town, nowhere near here. Um, and, uh, they gave me their contact information as well with some attorney firms that they used. And, uh, this gentleman actually reached out to an attorney firm in Chapel Hill, told them that we were looking for this, and they have asked to meet with me for fifteen minutes to discuss what we're looking for, and they could give us a proposal.
I'm not, I'm not voting for anybody in Chapel Hill.
Understood.
I'm serious.
I understand. Well, I hate to break it to you, cause the next one is the School of Government located at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. Um, so, uh, I have reached out to them, Mr. Landreth has sent me an email with some contact information. Years ago, they offered this service at a pretty decent rate of two thousand dollars. Uh, I have not been able to confirm that since. I have reached out to them, uh, via email, telephone call, um, everything but send them a letter, and they will not respond. So, uh, the the gentlemen that do this type of work are, uh, James Joyce, uh, Adam Love Lady, and David Owens. David Owens is retired, so that leaves two. Reached out to all of them personally and cannot get a response on if they offer that service still, and if so, what the cost would be.
Did you not get anybody on telephone?
No, sir. I sent you an email about four thirty. I said I called all three and no one answered. I called, I even called the.
Well, they may have been gone, but they.
Well, I called them after lunch. I didn't send you the email till four thirty, hoping they'd call back.
So, uh, where, um, where are we right now with putting everything, uh, together that we have? Because we 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 can't send this off to anybody until we've got all of our, um, updates put together. So, so where are we at with our updates?
So with our updates, as far as text amendments that have been made, Ms. Martin's got a a done, done deal list for that. She's, that's what she spent time on for the last couple of months, I would say, is going together and pulling all the, uh, ordinances that you all have approved that would make an amendment as a text amendment, uh, and pulled all those together. And of course, it's, she's agrees with this, there's no sense in sending those to MuniCode to put them in the book if you're gonna make all these updates anyways. So it's kind of a a decision that council still needs to make, is, uh, you know, do you want to pay any of these folks, but I'll use Piedmont Tribe Regional Council for an example, cause their proposal's sitting right in front of me, uh, to assist us with this. Um, there's still several other options on the table, one being, um, using, uh, the one that is done by Guilford County, that's used by Guilford County, that is one sixty D compliant, and adding our tables to it, uh, that's an option. Um, so there's plenty of options, and I think those were discussed by Mr. Winfrey and Mr. Snyder at the last meeting. So certainly, this is not the only option, it's just a option.
Well, these folks, will they take what we have and actually put it together, and when we get it back, we'll have a book with our ordinances? And then we'll have to approve it. How does that work?
I think that they will certainly, um, make any, uh, amendments that need to be made, or they'll, you know, put together what, uh, what should be said. Uh, but at the end of the day, we would still have to pay MuniCode to codify that and put it on our website. So it's still a costly increase with that, but I think they're pretty thorough that they'll just go through.
MuniCode doesn't do this, all they do is just put it on.
That's right, that's right. Uh, they may do it, but they're expensive.
Why don't we check with MuniCode?
They're very expensive. They're gonna charge you a lot just to redo it. I can go ahead and tell you that right now. I know Ms. Martin was in the ballpark of thirty thousand dollars by them.
Really?
Yeah, uh, to do.
It's probably been five or six years, but I know we spent ten, Tim, do you recall, tenish thousand dollars with MuniCode?
Yeah.
They're not a cheap company.
Right. Robbie said the the PTRC, they're local, I mean, they're in Kernersville.
Correct, correct.
So that's, uh, I I think that's a plus. Do they have, uh, access to attorneys or their own attorneys in that?
Yeah, I think they have attorneys that work within their their, the the PTRC, I would assume they probably have some attorneys on staff. Um, I don't know much about the organization, cause we're not a member, but, uh, a lot of municipalities are, and the Summerfield is. They just, as a matter of fact, Summerfield just used them to update their U D O, um.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah, so, um, they, uh, they, uh, I would, I would say that they have access to plenty of attorneys. I can't say for certain that they have them on staff, but I would assume as much, every other organization like that does.
I I think when we talked, there was a, my recollection is we, we're not sure if we can find our code in a Word format, so maybe some issue.
Yeah, so that 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 is one thing to bring up. I'm glad you reminded me of that. So a part of this, a stipulation is is that we would have to provide them with our entire development ordinance in a Word document format. It does not exist.
Robbie, we can, we can export that from MuniCode.
Correct, if we can export it from MuniCode as a PDF, we can use Adobe.
We could do Word, I I I'd do that, that's how I.
If it's doable through Word, that works for me. If we can do that, that works.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, all right, hey.
That's what I do.
Then we'll solve that.
It makes that table.
Correct.
The table's unreadable, and you, if you put it over in Word.
Yeah, and you can zoom it in. That sounds good to me.
Okay.
Good. Yeah, that was one stipulation that I'm glad you brought up, I forgot about that.
Is it possible to get a hard copy?
Of the development ordinance?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we've got two of them, uh, that were sitting in here at the March meeting, they're currently sitting in the breezeway. Uh, but I will say neither one of them are alike, uh, some have papers, but the others don't.
Yeah, this is crazy.
See, I've got a copy of it, and I've looked on MuniCode, and some of the things have been changed that, that there never was a, well, some things have been changed. I'd love to see before we send anything off, make any changes, I'd just like to see and compare. And, uh, I mean, we need to, we need to just go through it, and, uh.
Uh, there there are two hard copies that are both in leather bound binders in the breezeway. Feel free to take a look at either one. I've never sat down and compared both side to side, uh, but they're there. Um, and as far as printing off the one from MuniCode, it sounds like it's possible, it'd just be quite a bit of paper, but we can do it. If you want to go through it, I'd be glad to print it.
Yeah, well, it would be nice to have one hard copy of what's on there.
I I too, in my records, have an older copy of the ordinance that would be willing to make available to town to have copied. I will not turn loose of it to the town of Stokes.
Understood.
Yeah, I was getting ready to say, I've got one too, but I'm not turning loose of it.
That's okay.
And I too believe changes were made that were unauthorized in at least one spot that I could, that I can recollect, so bit concerned about these things. Mr. Foy.
Yes, sir.
You're really good at ciphering. Help me out here. This, this email from the Piedmont Tribe Regional Council states the dues for Stokesdale will be thirteen oh four.
Yes, sir.
They state that the total for dues and the one sixty D project at member rates would be four, forty eight oh four. So thus, when I take forty eight oh four and subtract thirteen oh four, I come up with a figure of thirty five hundred dollars to do, to perform this work for us for the one sixty D project.
Okay.
Are my figures accurate?
The, yes.
Okay, I was gonna suggest to council that if if we're going down this road with these folks, that we make a motion separately for membership funds to to join the organization and make a separate motion for the one sixty D project, just to keep the the minutes clean and so our citizens can track what we're doing now and at a later date.
But the, but the thirty five hundred figure was, um, that presupposes you're a member.
Yeah, we'd have to join, so.
It was six thousand dollars if you're not a member.
Yeah, I I I just said that the the six thousand dollar figure is is irrelevant, we're, if we're discussing joining. We're not gonna pay, we're not gonna pay six and not join. I I don't think council's gonna do that.
Right, okay.
No, we can join for a couple, couple of years, you know, and still have, you know, somebody can go have lunch like Robbie.
As long as both votes is passed, you're fine, but if one passes, the other.
Yeah, what they called that, they used to call that, but.
All right, it's something that used to be done. I I like the option we have, uh, I like that they're local, I think they're well resourced. They've worked with, uh, other municipalities in the neighborhood. Uh, so I'm gonna make a motion that we join the PTRS, Piedmont Triad Regional Council, uh, effective immediately uh, for one thousand three hundred and four dollars per year.
Our circuit said motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
I'm also aye, and being that that passed, the price for the PTRC to assist us with our updating our development ordinance to be, ensure that we're one sixty D compliant, becomes thirty five hundred dollars. I'm gonna make a motion, uh, that we, uh, hire PTRC to he- help us uh, ensure that we are one sixty D compliant in our development ordinance for the amount of thirty five hundred dollars.
Second.
All right, and I do wanna point out that Kim did state that this is in the budget if the cash outlay were to occur this year.
Right.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, Jimmy?
Hi.
Excuse me, go ahead, Tim.
If I may, Mr. Foy.
Yes, sir.
May not be important to anybody else, but as we go through this process, what I would like to see is when our ordinance starts being marked up and changed, I would like to see the old ordinance along with any changes that must be, must be, must be done by the town of Stokesdale to conform with 160D, inserted into that ordinance in red. And then if there are any suggestions that we do this and so, those be inserted in blue. I wanna be sure that we are differentiating between must do this versus, or shall do this versus we suggest you do this. Somebody's, you know, suggestion may look like a great idea to them, but on the other hand, I for one might have an objection to it. And, and that, that may hold true for any of our citizens. And so I think that's an important distinction for us to make to whoever we're working with at the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, no matter how innocuous it may appear to them. If we don't do it that way, I don't know how we're gonna keep up with any, any potential changes. I, I don't, I don't know what else to do.
I think it's a good idea, but we'd have to ask them if they'd do that.
Yeah, I can't guarantee that they'll do it.
And what if they won't, is, you know.
Well.
We would ask them.
I, I.
I mean, are we gonna, are we gonna base this, and if they won't do it, we don't do it?
Maybe.
I'm, I'm just asking.
Are, are me and you gonna be down here until the wee hours of the night going through it? And, you know, Jimmy, this is, this is in the old one, this is not the new one, and back and forth, I mean.
I've been through it a bunch.
You know, the modern word processing software being what it is, I don't think we're asking them for a lot, but certainly if they have a standardized way of doing this, I, I, you know, I don't want to have to jump through extra hoops just, just for little old me. But I think it's important, or at least it is to me, that we distinguish between the things that we have to do to conform to state law versus any suggestions that pop up along the way, whatever they may be. And so if we don't start out with that intent, how are we going to wind up where we need to be?
Mr. Jones, there, there are gonna be changes too that are, may not necessarily comply with state law, but there may be like, for example, the sign ordinance, which is a federal constitutional question. So I'm assuming you want those to be in red also?
I would think so.
Yeah, okay, so not only what you think, but anything else?
Required by higher government might be a better way of putting it.
Right, okay.
Fed, federal and state being inclusive for the purpose of using the red ink.
Right, okay.
Because we have no choice, right?
Right.
We just don't have a choice.
Right.
Yeah, I can certainly, whoever we speak with, I'm sure they'll have a sit-down and kinda ask what the parameters are. I can let them know. I'm just guessing, they're not gonna provide many suggestions, they're just gonna say, here's what the law says, here's what you need to change, and that's it. I don't foresee many suggestions coming, but they might put them.
I, I disagree with you, young man, I get this gray hair by accident.
Well, that's fine.
It's my job to worry here for the citizens.
That's fine.
Especially a vitamin deficiency, but. Well, it's just tough being as good-looking nonetheless.
I'll certainly tell them that, that you all are wanting to do that. Now, what if they, and I'm just asking if they say no? Do you want me to bring this back to you?
Well, I would like to know how they intend to do it otherwise.
Understood.
Maybe, maybe, I, I guess if I was a good council member, I would have already looked, reviewed how Summerfield handled the process and looked over their clerk's shoulder and had them show me that's just not enough hours in a day, that's something that we could do.
Understood.
Well, it looks like they're not really starting work until July anyway, so maybe we have some time to work that out.
Mm-hmm.
Before they get started.
I don't want us to, I mean, I don't want us to have to pay staff to go through it and look for those, those changes. And you don't, y'all got things to do already.
That's right.
And so I'm just trying to make it easy on everybody here.
Understood. I think it's a great idea, I agree. Whatever they think's required versus what's suggested, make a difference, and I don't foresee that being a problem. So I'll certainly throw that in there.
Export it into Word, it's two hundred and eighty-four pages.
Okay, front and back, that ain't many.
I hear you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Jimmy?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
I'm also aye.
We need to put any paper in the budget.
What was that? Oh.
Item number thirteen A, discuss inventory of closed session minutes. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Foy, after our, I believe our March meeting, that's canceled, I mean, got canceled, excuse me, the staff, when time permitted, to get started on the inventory of our closed session minutes, we haven't gone through the process that, to review those and release those that we can as required by state law. And I wanted to address this for, before too much of the year kept slipping by here.
Okay.
And so unless, you know, unless there's some technical reason, I'd like to make a, a motion that we have staff provide an inventory of the closed session minutes that would include the date of the closed session, the purpose of the closed session, and perhaps any other pertinent information that, that can be publicly displayed so that we would have that to, as a management tool to go forward to review minutes and release those that we can. And I'd, I'd like to have, I would like to have that done a week before our next meeting. So I'd like to have that in three weeks from today's date.
I'm in, I'm in favor of, of what you're saying, is that realistic?
I don't know.
Three weeks.
I can't guarantee it's realistic. We have closed session minutes that, that are older than me. Ms. Martin's been working on it, I know she's made a pretty good stride. Locating some of those older closed sessions is proving to be difficult. But let's see, I just received a text message, most of your inventory need to verify which have been released. So I think for the most part, the inventory's good to go, so we can certainly shoot for three weeks from now. I know he had mentioned it before, there wasn't a deadline given, so we didn't.
Well, I like deadlines, and I, and I'm gonna endorse the three weeks. If you're having any issues, just be forthright.
Absolutely.
And, you know, tell us where the hiccups are, and then re-project when it would be complete, but.
You got it.
We'll go with three weeks.
Sounds great.
All right, Tim, is there a motion you have? Did you word that in motion form?
I thought I did. Is that satisfactory?
Just to clarify, and I, and I'm certain it's the same one that you already had before, what are the categories you want date?
We would need the date of the closed session, the purpose council went into closed session for, and any allowable description that was available that wouldn't breach our closed session requirements. Mr. Winfrey, you wanna offer up any guidance how we could create an inventory here without letting the cat out of the bag on something that we're not, we're not allowed to, to discuss? For example, personnel matters, we wouldn't be able to release, but you could just label it as personnel.
Personnel matter, okay.
All right, I, I guess if we were, anything related to a juvenile, for example, we can't disclose the identity of, if there, if that was discussed in closed session, there's certain things that can't be disclosed. So we just need to be careful. So there'll be a stated purpose theoretically, every time they went into closed session, there was a stated purpose for the, for the meeting, for the closed session. I guess if there were action taken immediately after that, that you could reasonably infer was discussed in the closed session, then you might be able to make a connection between what the closed session was about and what action was taken by the council immediately thereafter, if that, if that happened. But that, that's gonna take, this'll, that's gonna take some spade work to figure out what that is and how you close that.
Once we have the date of the closed session, it wouldn't be hard for a council member to go back and look at the minutes and see if any action was taken, so I'm, I'm not necessarily asking for that.
Okay.
I, I think that the date of the closed session and the purpose of the closed session suffices for me, unless we want to include the number of pages, for example. I, I don't have a reference beyond that. But, you know, Mr. Winfrey, unless I'm mistaken, we're required to go through this process and release minutes from time to time. And that's still the law, right?
You can release, and I'm not sure that you're required to release them.
Well, I, my understanding is you, the town is required to review minutes periodically and release those that will no longer frustrate the purpose.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Yep.
I hadn't talked about that, I hadn't focused on it, yeah, that's correct.
Now, it's my understanding it's recommended, but not required, but certainly is recommended.
Can somebody find the statute on it? And not, you know, not now, not now, just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not wanting to get research.
I think it's required.
I, it's required.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree, it's, it's required. I, I think in inventory, you know, almost like a Excel file, a table of contents, if you will.
Nothing wrong with inventory.
A two or three pager that can be referenced going forward, looking back in history.
Yeah. Wish it already had an inventory.
You do, you have two separate ones. It's been done twice.
Really?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm only asking for us to inventory the closed sessions we haven't released yet. I'm not asking for an inventory of every closed session we've ever had now.
That's the thing, we, we have an inventory of closed sessions, we do not have an inventory of closed sessions that have been released.
I don't recall a whole lot of closed sessions ever being released over the years. I know that there's been some, but I don't recall. I'm, I'm not saying it shouldn't be done, I'm just saying I don't recall it being done, do you?
I absolutely require, recall us releasing closed sessions.
I know, I know some, I'm talking about a mass, and I'm not saying not to do it, Tim. I'm saying I don't recall a, a, a mass bunch being done, that probably should have been done.
Okay, if I may, none had ever been released by the town of Stokesdale until I was elected is something that I pursued over time, finally got us started reviewing this and, and releasing closed session minutes. At one point, I think we were fairly caught up, where we stand now, I do not know. But it's, it's my, unless somebody convinces me otherwise or shows it to me, it's the law that we're required to review these and release them periodically. The government has no right to secrecy, the citizens have rights to privacy, the government doesn't have a right to privacy, and, and we have a duty to our citizens to provide transparency about the actions we take on their behalf, so. And I'm sure y'all will agree with that as well.
Hundred percent agree. Prime, prime example, last year, we probably had six closed sessions where we talked about, you know, getting attorney advice for the water contracts, and those.
I, I think we need to avoid.
That, that contract's been amended, and those need, those need to be released. So, so this, this is getting us in that direction.
Mm-hmm, understood.
I don't, I don't think anybody has any problem with it, so I don't, you know, I don't know where we're going. I mean, you, you said you already got a list of it.
Uh, we, we have a list, yeah, we have two very old lists, one's from twenty fourteen, I believe, and then one's from even further than past that, but.
So you've got those, then, yeah, I'm all for it, so.
Good. We, we have a motion. I'll go ahead and second your motion, Tim.
Just to clarify, three weeks from today is May the second, y'all want that to be the deadline?
Unless it's on the weekend.
That, that's Thursday.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Jimmy?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
I'm also aye. Item number thirteen B, transportation window open for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year for the school bus. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Foy. Just before this meeting, our district school representative, Mr. Logan, came by and presented me with this document, said, you know, I'd love to stay, but I got another meeting I have to attend, and asked us to have a look at this. He wanted to make the town of Stokesdale aware that apparently the Guilford County school system is asking parents to reapply for transportation for the next school year for this list. I haven't had an opportunity to review it. My idea was that simply we would copy it for council and make the citizens here aware of it, and I was gonna suggest somehow that we asked the town staff to put it up on the town's website in an appropriate location, or at least a link there too. And I don't think there's any other action we can take. He didn't, he didn't ask us to render any decision or anything, it's just an informational thing that he was giving, giving us the heads up on so that we don't have any citizens surprised, if possible.
Good.
I'm fine with that.
I am too. I'd also like to see it on the Facebook page, I think that's.
Yeah, if we're gonna use Facebook, yeah, I agree. So I'll make the motion that we accept this document and that we have staff posting on our Facebook page and on the town's website. I, I would like a stipulation on it that it was received by the town of Stokesdale on this date and provided by our representative, Mr. Logan.
Okay.
I'll second.
Good. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? One thing that I would add, Robbie, is, is maybe if we could put on the Facebook page or town, just if we could note that folks should pursue this with Guilford County schools. In other words, we're communicating, they don't need to contact the town, because we would not be the appropriate people, but we're, this is important for our citizens.
I, I certainly agree.
Okay. All right, a motion and a second. Jimmy?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
I'm also aye. All right, moving right along, item number fourteen, public comments from the floor. Ms. Landreth, Mr. Stevenson? Anything for us? Get out of here before we blow away.
We'll need a boat.
We may not, we have to leave.
All right, we are gonna have council comments before we go into a brief closed session. Jimmy?
Well, I don't have much to say, just thanks for everybody coming out in this weather, and be careful going home.
I'd like to extend my thank you once again to Mr. Stevenson and Ms. Landreth for being here. I don't know if the lack of participation is because the citizens are happy with us or because they were behind, beyond hope, it always makes me wonder, but nonetheless, thank y'all for being here.
Lack of participation may be because of the pending tornado, that's about.
Hey, I can tell you when I didn't show up, it was because I was happy. So I hope that's the case.
We hope so.
Once again, just wanna express my gratitude to staff for, for all their hard work. This is a busy time of year for us with budget workshops and, you know, concluding our own fiscal year. So there's a lot going on, obviously. Robbie, appreciate you taking the lead on, on many of these items, if not all, on the agenda tonight. And I know that's a lot of legwork preparing for, for this meeting, so I certainly appreciate you and, and your leadership and all of staff for that. Also would like to recognize the North Carolina State University, both men's and women's basketball team for their fantastic success in, in March Madness. Especially, you know, the men's team making the final four as an eleven seed was historical. So I personally enjoyed that a lot, but just wanted to congratulate them on their success. With that, we are gonna have a brief closed session in accordance with statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven. We're gonna move to go into closed session to consult with an attorney in order to preserve attorney-client privilege as the attorney cancels the governing body of Stokesdale.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Jimmy?
Uh.
Tim?
Hi.
I am also aye. Okay, we will be back shortly. Okay, we will be back shortly.
Folks, I'll make a motion that we reconvene in an open session.
Second.
All right, Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
I am also aye. And with that comes announcements. Uh, the next town planning board meeting has been canceled, uh, and staff will be sending out a cancellation to the planning board. That was originally scheduled for Thursday, April twenty-fifth. The next town council meeting, uh, will be a special called meeting, uh, to, uh, discuss the budget. That will occur on Tuesday, May the seventh at seven P. M. Town Hall. Lastly, the next regularly scheduled town council meeting is scheduled, scheduled for Thursday, May ninth, twenty-twenty-four at seven P. M. Inside the Stokesdale Town Hall Council Chambers. Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All right, Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I'm also aye. Good night, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Forrester. You did a good job.
Yep.
Thank you, Tim.
Good day.
You're all right.
Cut that thing off. Do I say something wrong? Hey.
So whatever happened then, so there were, there was only a motion to censor.